Good evening and welcome to the planning board meeting of Tuesday, June 20th. These meetings are recorded. I'll take a motion on the minutes. Motion by John, seconded by Joe. Any discussion here or not? All in favor?
One abstention.
Three in favor, one abstention.
He wasn't here.
We have an eighty-one P. Lydia Lane.
Is this an expensive one?
Thank you. Can't be that expensive. Yeah, please lay out the... how many copies there, Paul?
Three.
Uh, Phil, lay out at least two. That should be fine. Good, Paul.
Ladies and gentlemen, the lot that was the last open lot on Lydia Lane, um, we've... we just purchased this lot and once we staked the property, the lot lines did not meet the... we went through the swimming pool next door. Um, so with errors being made, uh, by engineers at the time, the neighbor has agreed to adjust all the lot lines. Um, so the original lot line was twenty-two feet into the front door of the lower property. They now have no... they're square lot again. And by us moving that line up, it allows them to keep the pool, keep the fence as it is now and today, and it gives us a pretty much a square.
You're still ending up with compliant lots, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're just readjusting the law lines. Perfect.
That's all we're doing.
Endorsable as submitted, I assume, Paul? Okay. Pleasure of the board.
If a motion is signed, the eighty-one P.
Motion made by Babe to sign it, seconded by Joe. Any further discussion here or not? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? You can just leave that right there, Paul. Unless you're dying to... No, that's scary ice.
You want me to leave it with him?
Yes, yeah.
Paul, you can take those back if you'd like to. Thank you. Larry will sign that for you. Oh, you already signed it? Oh, you're good to take it, then.
So it's a good thing you voted to pass it?
Yeah. Well, I didn't know you signed it. Uh, we have an amended site plan for one forty-five West Street. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for the construction of a fifty-four point six-seven by forty-four addition to the existing office building. The original use variance granted in nineteen sixty-five for the subject property was subsequently modified in two thousand and eight to allow for the construction of a forty-five point six-seven by forty-five addition. The addition was not constructed and both the two thousand and eight variance and site plan approvals have lapsed since, as they pertain to the addition. At their six-eight-seventeen meeting, the zoning board of appeals again approved the use variance amendment to accommodate the addition. The current amended site plan application is to construct a forty-five point six-seven by forty-five addition to the west side of the existing office building. The parking lot expansion and landscaping upgrades were all completed in two thousand and eight. In addition, all building setback requirements of the RA zone can still be met. All other applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, Larry is recommending approval. You have the decision from the ZBA. Uh, Mike Dean has reviewed it. The revised plan now has the rooftop from the proposed addition connected to chambers before entering back into the existing drainage system. The plan should show the existing directional arrows with the parking area. Is there a pedestrian connection to the new addition from the parking area? If so, then grade should be known... should be shown, excuse me, making such connections, plus you... if not, the westerly most accessible space may need to be relocated to the east and existing sidewalks adjusted accordingly.
Just for the record, Mike had reviewed the plan. They didn't write another memo, but he's good with books.
Let me... I just... we'll get to that in a second. The fire department has no issues. The building department has no concerns. The water department has no concerns. All yours.
Hello, Reckard. I'm Elizabeth Mindini from Gary Aaron Hellman, uh, here on behalf of Dr. Goodman, uh, who's requesting the proposed addition that was shown on the original site plan. Uh, and was not constructed, and so now we're coming back for the addition. Uh, the comments that Mike had brought up were addressed. Uh, the infiltrators for the roof drain are here. The directional arrows are shown. And these spaces were, uh, moved easterly to allow for a proper handicap access to the new addition.
Very well. Questions from the board? Pleasure of the board.
Living up that area, I'm quite familiar with it. Uh, I move we give the okay approval.
Motion made by Johnny to approve the amended site plan. Do I have a second? Second from Joe. Any further discussion here or not? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Joe.
Thank you.
It was, uh, John, sorry. Um, just for housekeeping measures, there was a grant of extension requested, um, relative to the application of F and D Central Realty for Bear Hill Village Plan Residential Development. The applicant has requested an extension to seven eleven seventeen. May I have a motion on that?
And make a motion.
Motion by Babe, seconded by John. Any further discussion here or not? Motion granted for the extension to seven eleven seventeen. We have an amended site plan for twenty-three Maple Street. The applicant requests amended site plan approval to allow for a daycare center on the subject property. The daycare is to occupy the northerly half of the building, replacing an environmental firm and a karate studio previously located in that portion of the building. Eaton Apothecary, a pharmacy distribution business, owns the property, is still located in the southerly half of the building. There is no new building or additions proposed. However, the fenced-in area directly south of the building is reserved for the Eaton delivery vehicles. This prevents full circulation around the building, thus limiting access to the daycare use to the northerly driveway. Excuse me. The site plan does not depict the parallel parking that is occurring along the northerly edge of the northerly driveway, and there is no designated turnaround area in the rear. No pickup-drop-off circulation routes have been depicted on the plan. There is also no separation, other than a fence between the traffic lanes and the fenced-in play area that is to be located behind the building. I recommend approval of the amended site plan only if the above noted deficiencies can be addressed. From the town engineer?
Yeah, you want to pass these down while you're reading?
Certainly. Is the town engineer updated this, or is this an actual?
No, that's it.
Okay. There's a row of existing parallel parking spaces along the north side of the northerly travel lane that is not shown on the site plan. This may have impacts on the circulation operation of the new use. There is an existing fence with a gate that may prohibit full circulation around the building. The fence gate is located on the southeast corner of the building and extends to the southerly edge of pavement. The playground area extends onto the paved surface, excuse me, surface and close to the travel lanes. It is recommended that some type of barrier be installed to provide a safer playground area. Parking circulation on the plan for the new use does not appear to reflect the parking calculations shown on the zoning bylaw, five percent of students, et cetera. The water company has no issues. The building department, um, only notes that it... a building must be accessible in accordance with, uh, five-two-one CMR. Commission on Disability has no comments. The fire department has no changes. With that?
My name is Jennifer Ziole. I'm the owner of the daycare. This is a letter from, um, the landlord. He owns the Apothecary that explains the roundabout route for traffic. The engineer will make the plan, update this plan, so it shows the playground being moved back, so it's not on the tarmac. And there's not... the gate that's over here is never closed at all times. It's not ever closed, so there is a roundabout way. This is the first time, so...
No, no, no. You're fine. No, I didn't...
Sorry.
I didn't want to cut you off.
I'm like public speaking.
No, you're fine. Um, okay. So if I am understanding you correctly, is the fence to be relocated or removed? The one that you stated is never closed.
It stays there. It's always open. It's like, uh, for delivering trucks to get in and out, but it always stays open. I believe that's what that letter does.
Is that... yeah. Can you depict that?
Is that at the end of the building, right there, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
No.
So...
Right here, coming across, coming across here.
Come up a little.
Here?
It's the back.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
They're just... the site plan is a poorly drawn site plan, so you just barely see the rear fence. And, uh, that's open all the time. The front one, uh, does close.
Which one's the front one?
That's the back one.
Oh, there's one here?
That's the front one. Yep.
No, there's only one.
Again, on the plan it's showing two, so we're just trying to get to the bottom of it.
We gotta fix the plan, so what's there?
Yeah, I spoke with the engineer, Bill. He said that he would amend it and fix it.
Let me just read the letter, so we understand what he thinks he's doing. This is from Daniel McCullough, VP of Eaton Apothecary. I'm writing this letter to address and clarify issues related to the property at twenty-three Maple Street in Milford. The property is owner-occupied and currently operates a pharmacy and is leasing space to the proposed daycare. The issues involve questions of delivery vehicles entering the property and property access. Delivery vehicles consist of a daily van deliveries to the front door and twice a month UPS truck deliveries at the pharmacy loading dock located in the rear. The van and United Postal Service trucks are instructed to enter and leave by the pharmacy side of the building. Although rare, there may be a larger truck delivery once every two to three months, which could require entry via the proposed daycare driveway in order to access the loading dock in the rear of the... and leave by the pharmacy side of the building. The second issue of access involves a gate located at the pharmacy side of the building. This gate is used for privacy only. The gate is never locked or closed at any time. It allows free access to the property twenty-four hours a day. The opening is approximately sixteen feet wide. Okay.
Is it on the letterhead?
Uh, no, it's on the letterhead. Um, it is signed by... Okay, so I think if I'm reading his letter correctly, um, I don't think that there's a real need, according to what he's saying, excuse me, to actually have a gated area at all. So I think in terms of what we would probably be looking for is the removal of both fencing, gated areas, if you will. Um, I think that in and around the playground, I don't know if you've addressed, because I can't really tell, other than it looks like you put a chain link fence. I think per the town engineer, because there could be a potential for vehicle traffic going through there?
Yeah, we talked about that.
That you're going to need to put some sort of additional barrier, um, along that area for added protection, which again is not depicted on this plan. So I... again, I understand this is your first time here, and we're trying to be as helpful as we possibly can to you.
Right.
And I'm not looking for you to misunderstand what we're asking for, but I want you to fully understand...
No, I understand.
Yep. I want you to fully understand, um, what perhaps needs to be done.
Because Bill, the engineer, said that he would put in that as well, the barriers to the playground.
Well...
Or added in.
I'm questioning if you would be better served to perhaps come back at another meeting that shows the, um, parking that's going to be properly orientated, that you're going to show the playground's going to be properly barreared?
See, I can't... that's the problem. I have to be out of my building in two weeks.
Okay, well, here's... I can't... I'll put it to you this way, and I'm going to speak for the board on this one. The way this plan is submitted, we won't approve it. So I can't sign... I... I don't think we're comfortable signing this plan the way it's submitted, based on the recommendations of both Larry and the town engineer. And regrettably, um, the landlord's letter didn't really clarify to the highest degree that his willingness to remove the fence, other than the fact that he states that he doesn't really use it, which lends itself to saying that it should be removed. And it should be removed, again, reflecting back to both what the town engineer, which is Larry, and the town... excuse me, the...
Yeah, it's okay.
My apologies. Town planner, Larry, and the town engineer had specified, so, um...
There's got to be something that I can... because then I'll be out of business for about a month.
Well, in theory, Mr. Chairman, you... the board could issue tentative approval, uh, to help satisfy her...
No, we certainly could, but here's my problem.
Subject to the... requiring that these things be...
No, 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 I get that. And I think if the landlord was a little more convicted to suggest that he was willing to make those changes, that letter does not tell me he's convicted. So I... what I'm trying not to do is burden you with something that the landlord is not prepared to do.
Right.
Now, to Larry's point, we can certainly approve, subject to everything that was in this letter. And I... I don't know if that helps you or hurt you. That's what I'm trying to establish. I'm not looking to necessarily hurt you, but I understand now you're in a, you know, somewhat of a time constraint.
Yeah, because we were supposed to be on the board like a month ago, and then it hap...
Yeah.
Things just didn't fall into place, so that's kind of why it's like...
Sure. All right. Let me...
A lot of words.
Let me just open it up to the board for questions, if I may. Questions from the board?
I... I mean, I guess, for going to things to add to the plan, I guess I got a couple others. If we're going to be...
The loading dock almost shouldn't be where it is in terms of where the playground is, because it's not at... it... it doesn't serve a safety purpose.
Well, I mean, we... we should have a crosswalk back here. We should have signs back here that say playground or children or something before they turn the corner. Uh, I mean, I don't think it's the greatest thing in the world, but it doesn't appear like there's a huge amount of traffic, so there should crossing kids between there and the... in the playground. That's another... That's another option. So any and all of those things besides the total removal of the gate, because obviously there's probably going to be buses that drop off students or pick them up going to kindergarten and pre-k classes, they're going to have to get in here and get around. So we're going to need to make sure that that's accessible.
Yeah, and to the... to the point that both Mike and I had mentioned, some barrier between the traveled way and the playground area, uh, it... just moving the fence back to the edge of the pavement, while that provides more room, obviously, for the lanes, it still doesn't offer any, uh, protection for the kids that are inside the fence, so...
No.
Uh, you know, I'd think some kind of permanent barrier, or at least jersey barriers, which aren't permanent but are pretty heavy.
You do that. They can put... I mean, they could put bollards spaced at eight feet on center, seven feet on center or something, if they just want to put bollards in.
I do...
That would... that would...
I'd do them closer than eight.
Six foot.
Yeah, I would think that. I would think at least a minimum of six.
Yeah, because a vehicle could go between eight foot, uh...
Yes, correct.
So I think moving the... moving the fence back to the edge of the pavement is a main...
Bollards, eight foot, uh, six foot on, uh...
On center.
Space apart, minimum of six foot.
And then the... then the bollards would be installed in the pavement.
Correct.
Uh, and the fence would be at the edge of the pavement, and the playground... play area would be, you know, able to be grasped.
Where is the exit from the building to the playground?
There's two exits on the side of the building. There's these two doors, and they walk up the side to the playground. And there's also a back door that I haven't checked with EEC, the Commonwealth, yet, if the children can utilize that door to go to the playground.
Is there a sidewalk or a...
No.
It's just asphalt parking lot, and that's... yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's the other thing. I mean, if I... if I knew that, I guess my comment would be that we need to have a sidewalk along that whole edge, if that's the way they're coming out of the building. I assume they were coming down, that the ramp was accessible, and they were walking across here.
Yeah.
If not, I mean, that's not wide enough. They're going to be walking out into the...
Yeah, travel.
Traveling.
No, I agree with it.
You mean like they can use this ramp?
No.
Along the side of the building.
When I... when I made the comment about the crosswalk, I assumed they were coming out the back of the building, and there'd be a crosswalk here. If they're going to be actually coming out the side of the building and walking down the face of this building, there needs to be a sidewalk.
Well, yeah, they can go out the back. I mean, I just thought you meant open spaces for them to go out. I'm just using...
Yeah, but that ramp, it's listed as a ramp. That exit has to be handicapped accessible in order for it to be... in order for them to be able to use that. So if it's not, and I have no indication whether it is or if it's just a ramp, I think you need to...
I gotta be honest with you. Entering the building, you're going to... couldn't it be parking over there and coming around the building anyhow? I... I still think you're going to benefit from having some sort of sidewalk to get into the... to get into it anyhow, because you're not going to come in through the ramp during the morning drop-off.
You come in through the front of the building.
Well, and that's... that gets to the other point of the circulation pattern, as to how all this is going to work when everybody shows up at once to drop off their kid.
No, they don't show up all at once, because they typically drop off is between six-thirty and nine, so they don't all come in at once.
But even so, what's the circulation pattern you were assuming was going to happen?
Around and drive out. Park out here, come in through here, drop off out, and then walk out to their car.
So you only have four spaces, three spaces?
Well, then there's these spaces over here that they can use as well.
Well, those spaces were never approved.
No, she's talking about over here, the spaces.
Talking about the side. Parallel spaces along the north edge of the property line were never approved.
It's not wide enough for parking.
Because it's not wide enough, exactly. So those need to be removed from the plan and from the pavement.
Well, they're not shown on the plan anyhow, are they, Larry?
No.
No, but they... they... they're there, so, um...
Oh, they're there now.
Again, this is a...
So they'd have to remove the spaces. So so far, what I've got, other than what we said in the report, was, uh, the sidewalk along the north side of the building, painted crosswalk, uh, in the rear, either from the ramp or from where the sidewalk...
You may do it twice. I don't know which way they're going to come, so...
Right, right. Um, and directional signage, uh, in that area. Remove the gate and fences, uh, as far as the sliding gates...
Yes.
That we were talking about. Install bollards, six inch... six feet on center to protect the play area. They need to paint over the parallel space, uh, striping.
I think Joe also requested a stop sign at the... prior to going into the playground. I think he also requested a sign be erected, playground ahead. There was some quick discussion in terms of a, uh, speed bump.
Yeah, he offered to put in a speed bump.
Yeah, like I said, his letter doesn't reflect much, other than the fact that he references that there's a gate there.
I think this is his first go-around, too.
That's fine. No, no, I get that.
No, it isn't. He's been through it a few times.
Uh, well, I don't know him very well. And then there's these parking spaces along the side on the left, which I'm assuming those are... well, they're on the... they're on the plan.
Yeah, those are occupied now by Eaton Apothecary, and they're delivery vans.
The entire thirty of them?
No, just fifteen to twenty-one.
I can't imagine they use that many.
I couldn't think that they would use that many either.
I'm not too worried about the parking. I mean, I think they can...
I think the parking is ample.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they may have to walk a little bit from the side, but I can't imagine he's using that many.
No, there's only like five or six employees.
I think that the walk needs to continue up to... I think... you see the walk that's here?
Mm-hmm.
I think it needs to just continue up, and I can't tell. I'm assuming it's here, but then I think it needs to continue all the way through to the end of the bed.
Yeah, well, they need to find their circulation.
But those doors are at least one, if not a step and a half, above grade. So you can't run a sidewalk along the north side of the building flush with the building, because those puppies stick out, um, five, six feet, and they're like little decks, uh, on both of them. So there's no way to run a sidewalk along the building.
Instead of having two-way traffic, why wouldn't you just recirculate it to one-way traffic? And that way you wouldn't need a... you wouldn't need a lane that's...
I mean, I guess, again, I guess I go back to Larry's truth. If we understood the circulation, if their entrance is... if their entrance is going to be here, and they're going to take the children out here, I'm not as worried about that. You know, if that's not... not a usage to them, then that's fine with the stairway. But... but we need to know where they're coming in and where they're going out.
Well, they're coming in through the front, and to get to the playground, then they'll go out through the back. If that's what...
All right, true.
It has to be done, then that's what I'll do. I'll do what I... what you guys tell me to do. I'm not...
Yeah, that would make the most sense to go out.
If that makes sense.
That would make sense, but I... I don't know that... I mean, and certainly, the building official couldn't comment on the fact as to whether that, as it is right now, is legal or not. There's no grades on here or anything. I'm worried that somebody labeled something a ramp, and we're considering that to be an accessible route. You know, if it's not, then that's not the way they're going out. I just don't know.
Well, for all we know, it's an overhead door. It's not even a pass-through door. We don't know what the ramp represents.
Yeah, I know. That's my issue. I mean, I... I could live without the sidewalk, if in fact that works, but I don't know that that works based on the information that was presented to us. So if they can... if they can submit information to you, that's fine.
Okay, I think what you're better off doing, I think you're better off stipulating to put the sidewalk, assuming that this... if there's a change, then it could be modified. Then you could amend the site plan. But again, trying to curtail into her timeline, we're left with more questions than we are answers. And the problem is, you have to afford some sort of protection for the... for the... for the kids.
You could require the sidewalk unless... unless that rear entrance works, so you're...
But again, I don't even know... correct.
At least that'd get them off the hook time-wise, but, uh, nobody was very forthcoming in trying to figure all the things out that I tried to explain from the get-go that the board was going to need to see, including, um, land planning. So they're just...
I mean, obviously, my goal is not to not keep the children safe. I've been doing this for sixteen years. I just need to know what you want me to do.
Yeah, you could do the... you could do the sidewalk just from the second door down.
Correct. Yeah.
So this door where twenty-seven point three is?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes.
Out?
Towards the playground.
Towards the playground.
And then at the end of the building, you pick it up with a crosswalk.
So like where twenty-seven point... well, this is going to be moved back?
Yeah.
Then you'd paint a crosswalk.
You'd have to have to put a crosswalk there and have a gate where the crosswalk is.
Gate into the playground.
Right.
Gate into the playground, correct.
Before we have another gate going across.
And again, if the ramp does work out right, you could go that... out the back way if the ramp works out right, and just put the crosswalk there.
There, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
So they can... they can verify that and...
And not put the sidewalk in.
Correct.
So what is it that I have to do?
He's making you up a list.
Okay.
I would have your engineer talk to Larry, is what you really need to do, and find out the information. Because he should be able to explain it to him, because he's got to go out and get some information and be able to do this correctly.
Suggesting that from the get-go.
Yeah. I mean, regardless of what we say, he needs to know it, needs to have that information on. So the best thing would be to talk to Larry, because even if you do all these things, it won't get approved unless all of it's on the... on the plan correctly, at the end of the day.
You know, it almost lends itself, if you relocate it, if you... if you actually gated this, no, and abandoned that, and you moved the playground over, and then you made a turn where it says edge of pavement, it almost lent itself to...
Smooth the flow.
Well, eliminating the potential for vehicle traffic by eliminating the driveway. I'm just saying, that's... you could also do that.
Out in the back?
Well, to the right...
The thing is, if you want to do something temporary, just eliminate the use of the playground until approval.
Until later. But I think...
I think you have to have a playground.
Commonwealth, yeah.
They have to have the outside play area, so...
Yeah, it's like you're...
Again, this is why I said, if you eliminated the driveway and you gated it, you'd really... well, you could just...
Well, if they're... as opposed to what you might normally do, which is approve it, uh, subject and not sign the plan until the changes are shown on the plan, uh, you could issue a tentative approval with those same stipulations, and then...
Thing is, once... once they're in there, that's...
Well, she's doing it at her own risk.
Yeah, well, get them out after that stuff, if they... if they can't get it done. What's that? I'll go along with... with all the members.
I mean, uh, I guess I'm fine with it, provided we have either the sidewalk or the... the ramp as being the entrance and doing all the other comments that were on there.
Want to review the comments, Larry, please?
Um, other than the comments that Mike and I had in written reports?
Yep.
Uh, there was the requirement for a sidewalk along the north side of the building unless the rear exit, uh, can be confirmed. In that case, uh, it would be unnecessary. If it is required, it would... If it is required, it would be from the, uh, rear side door only, uh, but I think that little deck would have to be rebuilt, reoriented...
That's fine.
So that you would exit to the back. Uh, and yet, in any case, wherever either the sidewalk or the ramp ends up, you would do a painted crosswalk, uh, across the rear driveway...
Mm-hmm.
From the building to the, uh, play area, the fenced-in play area, and there would be a gate on the play area at the point where the crosswalk, uh, connects. Um, there'd need to be some directional signage, uh, very likely including a stop sign, especially for the, uh, westbound traffic coming in.
I think you also need to put no parking...
Yeah, no parking signs.
Along the driveway.
And no parking, uh, remove the, uh, parallel spaces and put no parking signs, because they were never supposed to be there, anyway.
Nope.
That's not me, though, right?
No, no, no.
No, but that's what you're inheriting.
I think so.
So, um...
Speed bump?
The bollards, six foot on center, along the edge of the pavement, uh, between the pavement and the, uh, fenced-in play area, uh, remove the gates and fences on the Eaton side.
Both.
Um...
Both.
I swear, there's only one.
I, again, I'm going by the plan it shows, too.
Yeah, I know, I know, because I can see what you're looking at now.
Yeah, so there's, there's, the, the rear, uh, area, uh, the only thing remaining back there is the, the main portion of the fence that stubs out from the building, maybe five feet at the most. Uh, in front, there's the full gate, uh, that, as he said in his letter, it's, uh, it's only, uh, well, it's not wide enough, whatever he said. And what'd you have, uh, speed bump?
Yep.
Is that still in there?
Yes.
And the speed bump would be along midway, uh, probably up the north side of the building?
I'd say right at the corner.
I think close to the stop sign is where you actually want it.
Right at the corner, would you, Joe?
If the stop sign doesn't stop, but the speed bump should.
Well, it depends on, on what the, to me, it would depend on what happens. If there's a sidewalk out here, I'd put it before the sidewalk begins.
Yes, exactly.
If there's no sidewalk, I'd push it towards the end of the building before you took the corner.
Right.
Yep.
So, there, there are those things, uh, I can go over the list with, uh, with Bill tomorrow, and, you know, make sure he gets them on the plan, or at least make sure he knows what he ought to put on the plan.
Can't see a shadow in the picture, can't tell if there's a gate, or where the gates are.
Can't tell.
I can show you.
That's fine. Um, all right, so you've heard the laundry list, what's the pleasure of the board?
What do I try, we can give a conditional approval based on making the changes?
Yep.
Yes.
Make a motion that we give a conditional approval based on the changes recommended in the, uh...
Is that one?
Town planners, and the town engineers' report, as well as those made by the, uh, by the board.
And...
I'll second that.
The building, uh, commission only give a temporary occupancy upon the sign.
Exactly.
Motion by Joe, seconded by John, any further discussion, Harry, not? All in favor, opposed, unanimous? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, maybe a letter.
I don't know what your next step is.
I think to try to help you...
Yeah.
I think you need to contact your engineer.
Are you going to get the plan?
And I think your engineer needs to call Larry.
The plan is...
I know, right?
And I think that he needs to update that plan to reflect the changes...
Mm-hmm.
That you had requested, just in an attempt to try to get you into the building, or at least have some, no, I, I, I'm good.
So, I come back, like, next month or some, the next meeting, is that what it is, or...
It's all prepared, yeah.
Yeah, if the plan's done, to get, to get the plan signed, but this will at least get you into the building officials, so...
Goodman's letter.
So, I don't know what I'm doing, well, in this part.
Well, uh, call me tomorrow.
Thank you.
No, Joe's giving it to me.
Thank you.
All right, and finally, we have a endorsement, mylar, one-eleven Cedar Street, motion on the endorsement. Motion by Babe.
Uh...
No, motion by Joe, seconded by, uh...
Me.
By John, any further discussion? Babe, you in or out on this one?
Uh, I wasn't here for the...
Okay. Three in favor, one abstention.
And you may want to do a motion to endorse the, uh, uh, street discontinuance plan for that sliver on, uh, Park Terrace.
Oh, okay. Motion for the discontinuance of the street on Park Terrace, motion by Babe, seconded by Joe.
Is this something, was it timed this?
No, I think that, no, no, it's another one.
So, what is it?
Motion, uh, motion to, uh, sign the mylar to discontinue the...
A portion of...
Portion of the road on, uh...
Park Terrace.[1599.16]